I'm gonna call the Village of Glarus Board Meeting to Order. Uh, I'd look for an approval of the agenda.
So, a moment.
I'll make.
Okay.
Second, Tammy.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 I'm sorry, Lynn, uh, I jumped the gun here. Can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Michael Bell.
Present.
Mike Ganshert.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Present.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Yep. Chuck Phillipson.
Here.
Roger Trumpman.
Here.
And Lori Wertz. Thought I saw her earlier.
Yeah, it looked like she fell off.
Yeah. Lori?
Lori, is that you?
Yes. I hung up on my cell. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn.
Yep.
Uh, Item 3, Public Appearances and Citizens' Comments. No to be able to occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone on that would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to Item 4, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve that. Peggy?
Ganshert, Mike, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5, Discussion Consideration, Extension of Offer to Purchase with Mr. William Coomer.
Uh, the village continues to work through obtaining the necessary authorizations and lands, uh, to eventually construct an electric utility substation. Uh, Mr. Coomer has agreed to extend closing until March 31st, 2021. Uh, following the approval of this extension, administration will begin the process of obtaining the conditional use per permit, uh, from the Extraterior Territorial Zoning Board. Uh, administration is recommending approval.
Ganshert, Mike.
This is Tammy. I'll go ahead and make.
Ganshert, Mike, would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Discussion Consideration, Approval of Land Division Via Certified Survey Map on Existing Parcel Number 2302401720000. Drake?
Uh, once recorded, this CSM creates the parcel which will be owned by the village slash utility following closing with Mr. William Coomer. Uh, the town has already granted approval, uh, as this, uh, resides in the ETZ. Um, administration recommends approval.
I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion, this is Peggy, to approve the land division, um, on that existing parcel. Do I have to name, put the number in, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
This is Lori. I'll second that.
Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. We want to roll call this one?
Discussion first.
Yeah. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, uh, Lynn, would you do a roll call on this one, please?
Sure. Mike Bell? Michael Bell?
Yes.
Mike Ganshert?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Yes.
Roger Trumpman?
Yeah.
Lori Wertz?
Yeah.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Lynn. Item C, Discussion Consideration, Extension Resolution 2010, Granting Executive Authority to Village Administrator Through June 30th, 2021.
Uh, this is the, uh, resolution that was passed at the, uh, beginning of the pandemic. It's set to expire at the end of this year. Um, this is a, uh, extension of that resolution through June 30th, 2021. Um, as a reminder, this is things that allows me to, uh, close public buildings, um, authorize, uh, work from home, authorize alternative, um, work schedules, uh, things of that nature to, um, deal with anything, uh, related to the, um, public health, uh, crisis we've been facing. Um, and so, uh, administration is recommending extending the resolution, uh, through June 30th, 2021.
This is Chuck. I'll move the approval of the, extension. Resolution.
This is Tammy. I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
There is a sincere hope that we are.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Alright. No, I was just gonna say, other than there is a sincere hope that on June 30th, we do not have to extend this any longer.
Yeah, well, we all, we all hope that, but that ain't gonna happen, so.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, Parks and Recreation Committee Report.
Okay, I'm, uh, well, first of all, uh, we discussed the, uh, um, in committee, we discussed the, uh, uh, specs and bidding for the, uh, improvement of the, of Glarner Park, and, um, we're still working on that. Um, I'm not, I wasn't expecting a resolution under the committee report part, but as long as it's here, I guess we should act on the resolution as, as presented for the fees for the, uh, our, uh, rec and, and, uh, pool fees. So, um, I, I would open that up for discussion.
Uh, the resolution is attached. Uh, this is a return to, uh, our typical fee structure. Uh, if you'll remember in 2020, due to service changes, we, uh, had a, a, uh, kind of a unique, um, fee structure to represent, uh, or to reflect the changes in services. Um, so this is a, a return to the, the, the typical fee structure. And then if, uh, something were to occur in which we needed to adopt, um, other fees again because of changes in services, we would come back, um, uh, for a, uh, and a, a change to those, those fees. Um, but for now, uh, these are the, the park and pool fees that, uh, we are, uh, recommending.
So these are the same prices that we've had over multiple years, correct?
Uh, Lynn, I don't know if you can remind me, but, uh, I think we may have slightly changed some of them, or were anticipating changing them slightly in 2020. Um, but it, it's not a dr- it's nothing, it, it's, it's very similar to, um, fees from the past.
It is very similar to fees from the past. I can't remember if there was maybe a slight change to one or two of the ball programs between 19 and 20. Um, I really believe that the pool programs are all the same as they were in 2019 and for quite a few years prior to that.
Okay. Cause those pool fees do seem like they're pretty low end. Um, I would love to try and present it to the board as, as an opportunity to discuss and possibly increase the rates here for the pool program.
I guess I'd like to, to have a little bit, um, more information about what maybe neighboring pool rates are, or different things like that, rather than just, um, raise them.
Well, I don't, I don't think this is a, a competitive endeavor, so I, I think it's more a matter of, do we want to uh, go with a given rate and, as usual, subsidized usage um, through our budget um, or whatever. So, um, we're certainly open to to discussion on the rates, but, um, that, I think that discussion would need to be based on some solid financial information. And for a matter, just to, just to bring this to, uh, discussion, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we approve the, uh, rates and fees as presented.
I would second that.
I'll say.
Okay, that was you, Lori, that seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, so, so, I'm, I'm kinda, we, we don't even wanna look at possible other, uh, nearby areas and see what their rates are and, and compare it with that. We don't want to start charging the people who actually use the facility more instead of just charging all of our taxpayers, uh, for what is, you know, the, the, what's lost. Uh, there, it just is kinda interesting how we want to go forward and go with, with, uh, not, no longer increasing the price instead of discussing it like, like a board should do.
Um, this is Peggy. Lynn, do you recall, uh, what they, what the income versus, uh, loss was of the, of the summer programs last year? Did we, I know we took it, we always take it, but do you remember in the dollar amount?
I don't think last year counts, uh, if you mean, unless you mean 20 this past.
Well, I think it's, uh, I think.
Unless you mean 2019.
Yeah, I mean 2019, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, um, I know in the, in the past, we've received questions. I know Lynn and I did run a, an analysis of the ball, of the ball programs. And Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially that, that program, if you look at just the cost associated with providing, um, uh, the baseball and softball programs, uh, not including, um, our park, um, and rector actor's salary, um, that comes very close to, to even, um, in what we've seen. So the, the revenue we bring in from that, and then the, what we expend in, in equipment purchases, umpire, uh, fees, things like that, league, league fees, um, things like that, we come very close to, um, to even, to even on that. The pool, um, is a, is, is, is subsidized, um, from the, the general fund, so from property taxes. And I believe, um, when it was, when the question was raised, I think some, at some point last year, um, it, it is in, it is a significant number that it's subsidized by. Lynn, the number that sticks out to me was around forty, uh, thousand dollars that we, we use from, the general fund uses um, on pool.
Yeah, I thought it was substantial. I couldn't recall the exact number.
I would agree, it was substantial. I, I don't recall the exact number. It was at least twenty thousand. Um, you know, sometimes we have capital expenses that, say that we had to paint the pool, so that adds ten thousand right there. Um, you know, we could do a workup and kind of take a five-year average if it's something you wanna look at and kind of go from there. See where we've run in the last five years and what some other communities are doing. I mean, you know, we probably have some time to do that if you would like us to do that.
Uh, and is there, has, has, when was the last time that we even increased the, the pool, uh, cost?
I wanna say it was probably five to six years ago. It, it's been quite some time. And then last year, we were like, okay, let's go with this. And then, of course, things just changed dramatically.
Right.
Um, so this year, we're like, okay, well, throw it back to what we had been doing.
But the rates have.
And I do wanna, I, I would just wanna add, um, that it, it is not uncommon. In fact, I would say it's, it's, an exception to be, to the rule would be a, a public pool that is not subsidized, um, from the general fund. So that, that is, that is the, it is common for communities that have a public pool, uh, that it is, that it does not, um, break even based on the revenues, the use, the use revenues collected, that it is a, a subsidized, um, service.
Most definitely.
Well, I think, um, since some of us feel, some feel a little, um, questionable about it, I think it would be responsible for us to, to take a look at, at fees and get a five-year average and then go from there, at least have something to draw from, some information. I, I agree with Mike.
So there, there is a, we're gonna, we're gonna test my Robert's rules. There is a motion on the table. So if, uh, if the board is looking, if members of the board are looking not to act tonight, um, I believe we would need a, a motion, uh, to, I always make, a motion to table until the next meeting. So depending on if the board chooses to cancel. Oh, sorry. Go, I'm, I apologize.
I was gonna ask for a point of clarification. I believe that the motion that is on the table right now is to go back to the fees that we had in 2020 for 2021. So basically to erase the.
No, no, that's not, that's not correct.
No, the mo- the motion on the table is essentially an approval of Resolution 20 dash 27.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table, um.
Um, I'm sorry, but.
Oh, we have to.
There's a motion on the floor.
Sorry about that.
Right, uh, I believe a motion, let me look it up real quick. I believe a motion to table, uh, does, takes a uh, priority. One moment, let me find my sheet. Um, I apologize, uh, in order Yeah, so if there, if, uh, if there is a motion to table and to, and a second, then that will, um, that is a, that motion is above the main motion in order of preference. So the board would take up the motion to table, um, first, and if that was successful, it would be table to the date, uh, that was mentioned in the motion.
So Peggy's made a motion to table?
Mm-hmm.
I believe, was it to the, um?
And we need it.
I, I.
Yeah, so it's a, a motion to, I guess, we'll, we'll say, it's a motion to postpone to date certain, I believe would be the, the proper terminology. And then that would either go to, depending on if the board, um, chooses to, to cancel the January 5th meeting, the next meeting would then be January 19th.
So should I just say date certain then? I'll make a motion to.
You, you, just, just, um, I'm, I'm not, not arguing the situation, but do you wanna just, rather than do that, lay it on the table? Um. Lay the motion on the table?
You mean, you, the motion that you had made?
My, yes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Which doesn't require a debate and.
I, I believe that is correct, yes. Correct, so, uh, it could be a, a motion to lay on the table. Correct, and then would just require a, a, a second and then a vote. And then at a meeting, it could be taken, it, there, it could be taken off the table at a future meeting. So, thank you, Chuck, that is, that's correct.
So all we need is a motion to lay it on the table then?
Correct.
So I guess my only question, my only other question would be, uh, Lynn, how long would it take for you to get that information together, or? What, what's the timeframe that you would need from us?
We could certainly have something ready. If the next meeting was January 19th, we could have information available by then.
Question, Mike Ganshert, uh, should possibly that information before it comes back to us at the board on the 19th, should it, uh, go to the committee first?
Uh, it, it certainly, it can be discussed by the committee again, but it'll remain on the table at the village board level. And then it would be ta- it would be taken off the table at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, Chuck, what do you say to that?
Um, you know, obviously, there's some, uh, there's some, uh, questions here and possibly some dissensions, so, um, I said, whatever's the most expedient way to, uh, work through this, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with it. I'm not, I'm not arguing the discussion, future discussion.
I understand that, Chuck. I'm just wondering if there would be enough time for that information to get to your committee? And then, um, on the January 19th, uh, have a recommendation from the committee to the board?
Uh, I see, I see what you're saying. Um, I'm not sure what the calendar shows on that.
Uh, it'd be January 13th would be the committee meeting, and I, I believe we could have information, um, by the 13th.
Okay. Well, so.
We could, i- if it's, if it's, if we're looking just for simplicity's sake, we can, uh, we can with, the, the motion maker and the second could withdraw the motions, and then we could, we could move on and, uh, I'll, I'll prepare information for the committee meeting on January 13th to be presented then at the January 19th board meeting.
Okay. Um, I would, I would withdraw the main motion if that's acceptable.
And does the second agree? Lynn, do you recall who seconded?
Um, it was Lori.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would, I would agree.
Okay. So moving on to Public Works and Public Safety Committee Report.
Okay, this is Peggy. Um, we had a meeting yesterday at two, and, uh, we approved a couple of licensures that were recommended by admin. Um, the police department will, provided us an update and thought the, uh, project was going along quite smoothly and suggested that if anyone would like to take a tour, uh, they would be more than willing to provide an opportunity for you to see what's being done. It's in the final phases. They're very pleased with the contractors, and all is going quite smoothly. Um, the other, uh, issue we had was a, uh, a, a request by the police department to authorize, uh, the disposal of their assets. And they would have that, uh, it would be just old furniture and cabinetry, and they would, I believe, offer that to the public on a first cub, first serve basis, and one item would be, um, given per family or per request. So it would be something that they cannot use or is no longer practical for them in their, um, new facility. And, um, they, the PD recommends, recommended that we, uh, agreed to that, and we did. Uh, we also had a discussion with Joe. Joe, are you here today?
Uh, he is not, Peggy.
Okay, uh, we had a, uh, discussion with, uh, Director Cockroft to discuss a work rotation, uh, if it is warranted to reduce the risk of, uh, COVID exposure, and I guess other facilities have done so, and so we agreed to have that, um, uh, responsibility given to Joe. And it goes along with, uh, Drake's, uh, the authorization with Drake. Also too, we, uh, recommended approving the reassignment of the contract, uh, for building inspection to Scott Jelly as, as a transitional, um, contract, and then also approved, uh, the request to recommend, um, proposals for, uh, new services and compare them. And perhaps go back to, uh, what we have now, or look at some other, um, proposals. And then, um, the last, might have you jump in here, Drake, cause I didn't understand all of the, uh, implication to this, but it was, uh, parking restrictions on Third Street. Um, Glarus CMS has expressed a concern regarding the navigation of vehicles on Third Street, uh, on both sides of the street. And uh, Joe presented a proposal to permanently move to one side of the street. Now Bert and, um, Jeff interjected and said that it, it didn't matter to them what we did, but if we set precedent of making one request to restrict, then other, others are going to, uh, come forward. But we, as a committee, discussed the fact that it was a, an emergency, uh, services request, and that was uh, quite prioritized. So Drake, I'm, I think I covered everything. You can jump in and add to, yeah.
We'll be, uh, we'll be putting together a formal plan, a formal proposal for Third Street, uh, for the committee and then, uh, board to look at in the future, um, regarding parking. Um, so that's the only thing I had to add on, on that, uh, point. And then obviously, um, we'll, we'll touch on the, uh, inspection and zoning administration contract in a little bit again, and, uh, uh, but just wanted to reiterate as far as the disposal of, uh, police department assets, that that's just, it's, it's laid out in our ordinance, that, uh, the supervising committee can authorize disposal, um, of assets, and that these are assets without, um, without, without value. So it's old office equipment, old, um, old furniture, um, uh, and things that, uh, have, have, have been or are being replaced. Um, and that, that'll just be a, a day that the police department advertises and, uh, offers those things for people who may wanna pick them up, and anything that's not taken will be, um, recycled, uh, disposed of in, in another manner.
So are, are you looking for a motion?
No, no action, no.
So I guess, uh, well, thank you Peggy for your report, by the way.
You're welcome.
Uh, I, Item B, Discussion Consideration, Assignment of Building Inspection and Zoning Administration Contract, Scott Jelly and potential, potential issuance of a request for proposal.
Sure, so as, as we touched on, um, Bill, the building inspector and zoning administrator, Michael Fenley, has sold, uh, total inspection services, and will be semi-retiring December 31st, uh, 2020. Uh, Mr. Fenley has asked the village to assign the existing contract to Scott Jelly, uh, to transfer those services to him. He will be the one, uh, taking over, uh, that business. Um, the Public Works and Public Safety Committee did meet, and they, uh, did recommend, um, uh, assigning that contract to Scott Jelly, um, in order to continue, um, and maintain our current level of services. But they have, they also recommended, um, authorizing me to issue a RFP to seek, uh, proposals from other firms and from our, our current provider, um, to, to provide those services to determine, uh, if there are other firms, uh, out there, um, and to review their, their, their services provided. Um, so we, uh, the, we are looking for action on this item, uh, to, um, uh, assign the current contract to Scott Jelly, uh, and then. Uh assign the current contract to Scott Jelly uh and then also to authorize um myself to issue an RFP um seeking. Um proposals for um building inspection and zoning administration services. Um and then, once we receive those proposals, we will come back with a recommendation on uh. On um who to select uh for those services in in the future. Our current contract with total billing inspection services. Uh allows either party to exit with thirty day notice.
Ganserit Mike here. I have a question with regards to the existing contract. How long is that contract good till? Uh or when does it run out?
It renews automatically, so we've had it for a number of years now and it's now on a, it renews annually automatically.
Okay.
Is that a, what, what date? What date, what's the renewal date? Um. First of the, first of the year?
I can pull it up real quick, one moment.
Please.
Let's see, it's a, it was, it was first authorized uh executed on. Um, it looks like October twentieth, two thousand and eleven and the term states that it's a one-year contract that renews automatic, it's that renews automatically. So it looks like it would. It would renew on October twentieth, October twenty first. Um, but then a- any party can exit with thirty day notice at at any time.
So, when you say this renews automatically, uh this is, doesn't come under the uh. Under the review of the, the uh board or its committees on an annual basis?
Yeah, it has not in, in years past, no.
Um, that doesn't seem like good business practice to me. Anybody else think it is?
I agree with you.
I agree.
I think um. Right, it may be with the thirty day notice, obviously, that the contract could be and services could be looked at any ti- at any time. Um in order to initiate a a change if that was desired. Um so um. But no, there has not been, Lynn, unless I'm mistaken, I don't believe there has been a, an annual review of of these, these services.
That also sounds weird to me as well, where it's an annual contract, but any party can cancel it with thirty days notice. That, that doesn't really.
Uh, having an out clause in contracts that the village enters is pretty, is is pretty common for services provided. Um, it would be similar. We had out clauses with our, with our previous um. Up assessing uh service. So typically, we do, when we do enter into agreements, uh the village does try to include a clause to to exit. Um for either party um with a certain amount of of written notice.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's a. I, I don't think that's a good idea. Uh with any of our. Services and I, I think these things should come. Up for automatic review. For one thing, we don't have any uh. Any real continuity on an elected board. Uh, new boards come and go and they don't know what happened prior. They don't even know, I mean, I. I, I'm shocked that we have such a loose contract. Um dating back uh nine years, I guess. Um, I don't, I don't think this is good. I, I, I know this is not good business practice. Um. I, I think we need to look into that. Aspect of it. I'm sorry, I'm still uh on the floor. Um. So uh. If we were to. If we were to approve this assignment of inspection. We would be. What locked in until? October of twenty twenty one?
No.
No, we.
Uh, no, I, I understand, I understand the, the out clause. But that's sort of a, um, who's going to bring that up? How is that going to come? Come to the fore? Um. You, you, but where, where would, where would it? Where would it take place? If somebody would say, well, this, this really sucks and. And uh, we want out. I'm not saying that couldn't happen and it's not workable, but um.
Uh, this is Peggy, Chuck. I can.
Wait, wait, one more thing, one more thing. Um, so. So we, when we talk about the uh pool fees and so on. Um, uh, you know, with, and ver- very reasonably, people ask, well, uh, what are other? Places doing? Um, in other words, um. We want to make sure we're competitive, doing the right thing. I think the same thing should happen here and I know there's two different. Items here that we have the extension of the contract and then the, the request for proposals. I just, I just don't want to jump into. Something that's going to lock us in. To a problem.
This is Peggy Chuck. We saw, felt that way. That's why we're going to move for um a request to s- to seek out new proposals and at that time. Then we will either terminate that contract um or set up uh some new language to have that brought before the board and, and um. Considered as we uh extend it or can seek out new proposals, but. At this point, we're going to, going to use Scott just in the interim uh while we look at some other proposals.
Okay, um, I, 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 I understand that. So um. Going further into this, um. Well, how? We have, we have a single sheet here, uh which is uh. Page number twenty seven on my agenda packet. Um. Are we, are, are you as a committee, you, you've checked all the credentials, you know that? That they will be um. Now, I don't know if we're talking about Scott Jelly here or Total Inspection Services, but um. Uh, we know that they're fully qualified to carry out. All the inspections necessary for the village?
Yes, we have the, we have the credentials um. Um, here at the village.
I, I share some concern with Chuck in. Um, I'm wondering if maybe even if. We extend the contract. Or if, and if, maybe if we proceed the same way. Should there be some point, an annual point that we should review the services?
We can certainly set up a, a, an annual. Item on a, on an agenda uh each year uh to review um. Building inspection and zoning administration services uh of the year prior.
I, I guess I would feel much more comfortable with that. Um, I ca- I can certainly understand, we can ex. Um, we can exit the, the contract or break the contract within thirty days with a thirty days notice. But I would also like to see some legitimacy involved with uh with a review, with an annual review.
Yeah, I, I think that goes without saying. Somehow I, I, I feel we've been negligent in not discussing this particular contract. Um, prior to. Prior to this meeting, but um. That's water under the dam and uh. We need a building inspector. So uh. I guess, I guess we need to proceed with. Having hiring a building inspector or continuing a contract. With, with the. Code of Sol that we. Put this out for proposals. Um. And uh. And in the future and, and somehow, somehow I, I would like to work into this, that we work into our. Our language that we do reviews of, of all our services, whether it be. Whether it be uh. Assessor. Uh, building inspector, village attorney, whoever it may be. I don't think these things should slide by on an automatic renewal basis.
So, ma- yeah, ma'am, I speak. Um. So I agree that uh I would like to see um our contracts with, with all of our services such as that kind of looked at a little more often and, and, and not allowed. To just renew without even being brought. To, to the board. For discussion because I think like you said, when, when I came in, when I came in new and different things like that, I'm not even aware of. These contracts coming up or when, or what they are. So like, for example, I didn't know in October, we could have looked at that. Or um that there was this thirty day uh out, out. So I guess if there was something that would bring at least. Uh something to the board and at least let us acknowledge that there is a contract here that is on an automatic renewal. And did we want to take a look at it? Uh I think that's a, a good idea. Um, but then in, for this particular um incident, do we need two separate motions? One to continue with the company that we are with. Uh knowing that the employer, the employee has changed and then one to go ahead. And uh. Look at different uh companies at this time. Or do, can we make one motion?
I'm sorry, Tammy, I, it, it cut out a little bit. What the? You can, you, you could make a motion to, it could be done in one motion to assign the current contract to Scott Jelly and to authorize the issuance of an RFP. Um for um. Building inspection and zoning administration services. Was that your question?
Yes. So I'll go ahead at this time and make a motion to um continue our service with Scott Jelly. And to uh go ahead and do exploration of the other companies. For consideration.
This is Chuck, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Uh, wait, 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 yes, just one thing, one thing, just for the record. Um. Um. Yeah, just for the record, I'm saying that um. That uh. We should have a annual review. This is not part of the motion. This is just part of the discussion for the record. Um, that I believe we need to have a. Annual review of all our service providers. Independent service providers.
When do you think we could set up? When, when do you think we could set up an annual re- review and, and get that going? Is this something that we could have like every November?
Well, I.
Yeah, I'll take a look at, uh, I'll, I'll take a look at our contract, our ongoing contracts um. For outside services and uh see. Um. And, and get the details of each of those contracts and then, and then report back on what may be appropriate times to review. Each of those contracts. There may be different times throughout the year when it's appropriate to review uh a certain, certain pieces, uh certain services uh versus others.
Okay.
That makes perfect sense to me.
Yep. But I just don't want the ball to be dropped on this. I, I, I want us to do these reviews. I, I think Chuck is absolutely correct. Um, and. Let's just get it done.
I will be, I will be certain to follow through.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Tammy, uh Fire District Board Committee report.
Sure, um. We actually just met last night and uh I think we're coming to some really good conclusions on our. Thirty-year municipality agreement, which forms the district. Um, there were just a few uh touch-ups that were suggested and Drake and I were able to uh. To present those before noon today, so I was pretty happy with that. Um, we also worked a little bit more on um. Getting better information about how we are connected to MABUS. Uh, and Lynn was very helpful with that today and that information has been requested by the insurance companies. In regards to uh the issues that we had earlier on that and I believe that we made a lot of forward progress on that. So um. Yeah, I think we're working pretty hard on those two things with the fire district. So um, that would. Be all I have, I think.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. Uh, next is Library Board Committee report.
Yeah, and we uh did not have our last meeting, but uh are still continuing to um. Make progress towards building in twenty twenty one. So we have a meeting tomorrow night. Uh, where some more information should be brought to us. So we'll be able to fill you in in our next meeting.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. Uh President's Report, Discussion, Consideration, Cancellation of January fifth, twenty twenty one regular board meeting.
Um. The uh first board meeting in January follows a holiday weekend. Uh I will be out of the office that previous week, uh taking some vacation time. At this time, there's no um urgent items that are anticipated for action by the village board on January uh fifth. If any items did arise, I would ask Roger to call a special meeting. Uh but at this time, it does look like if the board uh. Uh would like that you would be able to uh cancel that meeting.
Ganserit Mike here. I would make a motion to cancel the January fifth regular board meeting.
Chuck, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. One other thing, uh Lynn gave me a reminder that all nomination papers are to be completed and filed with the clerk by the fifth of January, twenty twenty one. So if anybody, whoever's got nomination papers out needs to have them in by the fifth of January. Okay? Anything else this evening? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Good morning.